...town board to order on the sixteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise if you're willing to join us for the public speeches.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We will do a moment of silence today as we start with some sad Three beloved individuals recently passed away, and four, if you include Brian Williams. So we've received word of the death of Bill Masterson, former Southampton Town Highway Superintendent, who died on November fourteenth at the age of eighty. Bill was highway superintendent for twenty years, first elected to the position as of January first, nineteen ninety, and continuing through December thirty-first of two thousand nine. His wife Laura predeceased him. He is survived by their three children, William III, Ellie, and Kathleen, and two grandchildren. Visitation will be Monday, November twentieth, three to six, at O'Connell Funeral Home, right here on Little Plains Road in Southampton. And the funeral mass will be Tuesday, November twenty-first, at eleven a.m. at Sacred Heart's Roman Catholic Church in Southampton. Also of note, other members of longstanding service in the town's extended family have passed away in just the past few days. Former town chief building inspector Paul J. Houlihan, former chief building inspector Paul J. Houlihan passed away unexpectedly on Tuesday, November thirteenth, at the age of sixty-eight. He served most of his career in the town's building department, eventually rising to the position of chief building inspector, before resigning from town service in two thousand and one after twenty years. He then joined the village of West Hampton Beach as their chief building inspector for an additional eighteen years. Services for Chief Building Inspector Paul Houlihan will be visitation Saturday, November eighteenth, from two to six, at R.J. O'Shea Funeral Home at ninety-four East Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. There will be a private cremation. And lastly, Detective Sergeant, retired Randy Hints. Detective Sergeant Hints passed away on Saturday, November eleventh. He was sixty-eight years old. Served the people of Southampton as a member of the Southampton Town Police Department for twenty-two years prior to his retirement in two thousand and three. Services for Detective Sergeant Hints are as follows. Visitation on Friday, November seventeenth, from six to nine, at the Alexander Rothwell Funeral Home, six four four seven Route twenty-five A in Waiting River. Firematic services will be at seven thirty p.m. Funeral services and burial will take place Saturday, November eighteenth, at ten fifteen a.m. at the Waiting River Cemetery, two two oh one North Waiting River Road in Waiting River. We offer our deepest sympathy to the family and friends of these men as a passing, with the passing of these dedicated civil servants, and we join together in their memory in silence, sending our prayers to their loved ones. Let's join together. It's been a tough week for the town.
Yeah.
All too young. Um, so, Madam Squirt, would you read the special meeting notice, followed by the roll call?
Members of the town board, special town board meeting, Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one p.m. Please be advised that pursuant to section sixty-two of town law, a special town board meeting will be held both in person in the town board meeting room, Southampton Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, and via video conferencing on Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one p.m. for the purpose of considering the following. Any resolutions amending the two thousand and twenty-four preliminary budget, authorize increases in the maximum amount to be expended annually in the town of Southampton special districts, adopt the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight capital program and two thousand and twenty-four capital budget, adopt the two thousand and twenty-four final operating budget. Jay Schneiderman, Supervisor, Town of Southampton, dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Present.
Councilman Martel.
Present.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, thank you. So we'll begin, and we have the assistance of our controller, Dorothy Godluskie and Kathleen from that office, if there are any budgetary questions as well. But we're going to start with public portion. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in public portion by the town board? All right, we will go online, as this is a hybrid meeting. If you wish to be heard in public portion, please click the raise hand icon found usually at the bottom of the table. There are no hands. All right, I'll make a motion to close public portion. Seconded by Councilman Bouvier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Were there walk-ons? No, they're already in the packet. No walk-ons. Okay. So we can then go to the packet. Let me, first, before we get to the resolutions, thank Dorothy and her staff for their assistance and all the town department heads, and Frank as well in my office, for working on the budget for next year. It's a tremendous amount of work. It, you know, sets the amount of taxation for the following year based on, you know, our projection of expenses and revenues. And, you know, we try to stay within the tax cap, which we have done, and we try to be responsible to our taxpayers by trying to keep taxes as low as possible, yet we want to provide good services, like we are doing at the police department by adding four new officers, so, and a few other critical places as well. So let me start by reading resolution thirteen seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-three. This amends the two thousand and twenty-four preliminary capital budget for estimated roll forward amounts. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Skivoni. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. Resolution thirteen seventy-three of two thousand and twenty-three amends the two thousand and twenty-four preliminary budget for salary and related benefits for Sun TV and town council positions.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Skivoni. I think the board is all familiar with this. It has to do, it's a slight change to the original budget in terms of the cost centers involved with the Director of Education and Government Cable Access and bringing it back to Public Information Officer, at least for portions of the year. All right, so I'll call the vote.
I had a question on the title, says Town Council Positions. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so, there's an individual who's working, and Kathleen, if you want to come up to, who's working at Sun TV, who is in a legislative aide title, and I just simply, when I first prepared the budget, kept that in the legislative aide title, assigned into the council office, also understanding that this person was going to be retiring, so that we would have a full year with a new station manager. But based on comments I've heard from a number of people, this resolution re-changes that. It goes from the town council office back to Sun TV.
Correct. We just reallocated a position.
All right, just to move, that's what I was, I was trying to link it to a resolution.
Correct. The position in the town council becomes vacant, and we're reallocating and changing the title from the Director of Education, Government Cable Access to public, back to the Public Information Officer, and we allocated that position back to the Sun TV.
Yeah, because we've been shorthanded in the town council office for.
There's no financial impact. There's, this is just the reallocation of positions and making the vacant position back to the town council.
Right. And, you know, when that person, it's anticipated that person's going to retire mid-year, if the town board wishes to change that then to a station manager position and hire with that civil service title.
Absolutely. You know, balance that position and create a different one.
There'll be available funds to do that.
And we also have changes in CTV that need to be addressed, and that's why I'm supporting this, to have this person onboard for the whatever months of the year and beginning part of next year, so that we can have a smoother changeover.
And a, yeah, to transition. All right, thank you.
All right, all right, so, thank you, Dorothy. All right, so, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. All right.
Town Board Resolution thirteen seventy-four of two thousand and twenty-three, amend two thousand and twenty-four preliminary budget for salary and related benefits for.
Second. Seconded by Councilwoman McNamara on the motion. So I received very, an awful lot of requests from awful lot of departments and individuals for raises. You know, this is a challenging year with inflation and other things, to try to stay within the tax cap. And, you know, I had to make some very difficult decisions, and so I did not program any raises, any raises of the dozens and dozens that were requested. It really is up to this board. I'm not going to single out an individual here or there. It's nothing personal. I'm sure everybody is worthy of raises, and everybody is doing a great job, but because I had so many, and now we have a new incoming board, these things can certainly be done next year, but, you know, I'm not going to be supporting any of the changes in salaries. I just don't want to pick and choose, so, that's my personal position. That's, in this case, you know, the individual is certainly worthy and does a great job. There are a lot of other people as well who are worthy of raises.
Well, I'd just like to point out that there's extenuating circumstances within the council office, where we've had an individual working alone in a, in a job for, that's really designed for two or more people, and, you know, to me, that's a unique situation. And she's done it well.
But you're not going to lower it when you have a full office.
No, I know, this is a difficult decision to make because of that, you know? You have, you have personal, you have personal awareness of what, what the person has contributed to, to helping the council office in particular, so, you know, it's a very difficult decision to make.
Yeah, if there had been a way to give her a stipend mid-year, I think we should have done that then, you know? So to give her this, which I consider less than half of what she deserves anyway, it makes sense to move this forward and continue to pay her at that rate moving on.
For me, I'd like to echo some of the sentiments of the supervisor as far as raises outside of the budget. We think we've received a number of requests for raises in a variety of departments, and so I'm not going to be supporting raises at this time. And as far as the, the council office, there were names brought forward, and, you know, the council members or some council members, you know, wanted this situation to be what it is, as it currently is, so, you know, it could have been resolved, or, you know, help could have been brought in, but we decided not to do that.
Yeah, I think we all agree that to wait after, till after the election, and that's what you're going to do. So you can pick your person after this, but I think this individual has done one hell of a job for the four of us, and she deserves a raise.
Yeah, I could say that, though, about so many people.
And we do, and unfortunately, there's going to be others in this packet that I feel the same about, and, you know, we're not doing enough for the people in the middle brackets as far as livable wages, and this is one place we could start.
Well, you know, we have increased longevity, we've shortened the workday, we've added to base pay thousands of dollars, we've lowered insurance contributions, we have done a lot for the employees to try, understanding the high cost of living in the area, to make life a little bit better for them.
A little bit better, but we still fall behind other towns, that's the problem.
Um, I think we're pretty, we're pretty competitive, but, you know, but, but this is singling out an individual and not helping everybody in the same bracket, so, listen, I'm not going to hold it against those who support this. Again, it's not personal. The individual does an excellent job, but I just can't pick one person out of the entire workforce of so many people who've requested salary increases.
And it wasn't just them, it was their department heads who requested salary increases for them. So, to say no to those folks.
And it was, it was only a year or two ago where I did support an increase for this individual in terms of salary.
Because this individual took on more duties.
It was doing those more duties before, but yes, more of as an office manager, and we found a way to increase her salary.
To take on those extra duties.
Yes. To take on those extra duties. So, anyway, I.
Well, I just, I have a problem because I do have personal knowledge, and maybe I should just recuse myself or abstain, but I, I don't want to because I have, it's, for me, it's a matter of conscience. It's somebody I've had a long-term experience with over the term, over my term, that I've been here, who's gone out of the way and above and beyond, and it's very hard for me conscientiously to say no to that when I've seen how much she's done. And that's, and that's a problem, and I'm wrestling with it.
I understand that. I mean, I have three incredible people in my office assisting me. They're, they're all deserving of raises. They all do incredible job for the people of this town, but it puts me in an awkward position now, because, you know, I did not request additional money for any of them. They all deserve it. I'm not saying this person doesn't deserve it either, but those are the hard choices that we have to make.
Well, if this was an extenuating circumstance, there was no replacement for the person who left that was decided upon, and all that work fell on this one person, who without objection, took that on the chin and kept going, and it's run flawlessly, and she's doing the job of two, two and a half people, basically.
And I will, I will add that it's a very, very difficult position. It's a political position of sorts, and this person, you know, took me on, you know, and, and put politics aside, and, I mean, worked seamlessly for me and for other people in the office, and ended up working with four very different people for the last six months, and took on all the extra duties, and did so in a very professional manner and a very non-political manner, and, you know, like Rick had said, we wanted to give her a stipend for doing that, and we didn't. So this is a way to correct that.
Well, I understand your desire to reward her, but it does unfortunately put some of us at, in an awkward position.
So then vote no.
So, yeah, let's just vote on it.
Well, it's very, it's very uncomfortable to be put in this position in the first place, because I don't want you to feel uncomfortable, and I, but I do have a conscience that this is important to this individual, given the personal circumstances, given the circumstances in, in our office, and what she has done.
And will do going forward.
And will be going forward, exactly. So, you know, I, I'm really upset because I am being asked to go against my conscience when I know this situation, you know?
You do have a new board coming in in January, but all I can say is, there were so many worthy individuals that wanted raises.
Yeah, but I can't make, that's a false comparison. They have to do what I know.
We're picking one to get a raise. I mean, that's, that's a decision, it's really the majority of this board. If there's, you know, if their votes are there to do it, that's, it shall be. I'm just saying that I, it's nothing personal, but I, I can't single out one individual when I know that there's so many other people.
And I understand that. It, it doesn't need to be justified.
And the other thing is that we've given other people raises over the course of the two years that I've been here, this just happens to be part of the budget, and it happens to be singled out now. We have given other individuals raises in other departments because it was warranted, and I don't know why we're making an issue of this now, simply because it's part of the budget.
Not an issue. It's a vote.
So let's vote.
All right, um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm gonna vote no.
And I'm gonna vote no.
John?
He's a yes.
Yes.
All right, so it is approved on a three, two vote. All right, we'll move on to thirteen seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-three, amends the two thousand and twenty-four preliminary budget for organizational charts. This, this is really just housekeeping. We want to make sure that the charts match what's actually in the budget, so, so there's just some minor corrections based on actual roles and responsibilities and number of individuals within those divisions. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bouvier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. Resolution thirteen seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-three authorizes increases in the maximum amount to be expended annually in the town of Southampton special districts.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Skivoni.
On the motion, just a, a word, we addressed this the other night at the, before we, before we ended our public hearing, and there are thirty-one special districts in the town. There are sixteen of them where we are collecting fewer taxes than we did last year.
Right, and you talked about that because of the buildup of surpluses.
Right.
We're able to return that to the taxpayers. Okay, any other comments or questions or discussion? All right, I'll, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved.
Town Board Resolution thirteen seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-three to amend the two thousand and twenty-four preliminary capital budget for townwide drainage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McNamara. So, on the motion, we budgeted for next year one point three million, one point three five oh, zero, zero, zero for drainage.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you.
Four hundred thousand, right?
We, the request was for one million, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, the press was, okay.
We only, in the budget, preliminary budget, as it stands, we only gave Highway six hundred thousand for drainage, eh, four hundred thousand, I'm sorry.
Four hundred thousand, correct number?
Correct. So by, by doing this resolution, we're bringing back to the amount that the Highway requested.
Now, is this?
We would have to.
New drains or drain maintenance?
So we do have Assistant Highway Superintendent Mark Brager here, he can explain.
Hey, Mark. Because I know that some, some of these things may qualify for Community Preservation Fund or the Quality. We've done some things through that, so, and can you give me, Dorothy, do you have what we budgeted for drainage in the current year?
Uh, for the two thousand and twenty-three, I don't have that with me. I can go back and, Captain, can you, what we did? I don't remember.
So, but you're saying that in the proposed budget?
We, we gave them additional four hundred thousand, correct?
An additional four hundred thousand?
With, to whatever is left over from this budget in two thousand and twenty-three, because remember, capital, it's a multi-year budget, so whatever is not spent, it just rolls over to another year.
Oh, so there may be some money left over?
I, right, I'm not sure, that, we will not know. That's why we have the roll forward resolution, where we, where we estimate what's going to be spent or not. I, remember, we're spending up to December, so.
All right, Dorothy, you want to add something?
Dorothy, I'd like you to re-explain that in a moment. Go ahead, Mark.
We have two projects. I know you've got a lot of phone calls about Flanders, Long Neck Road, Royal Avenue of that area. That one project on Royal alone is going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's all, the Clean Water Act, all that stuff, that's what we're trying to, to, to get accomplished there. At the end of Long Neck, we did try to do some.
So, wait, Mark, on that project, there's money available, right? That was county money?
No, 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 that's, there's nothing available. We tried to get money from the county, and we were denied.
Okay, because there had been some money for that area that goes way back, that I don't think was spent.
I don't know where it went, but it wasn't there for us to, to try to use. And then we're also trying to do another clean water over at Hampton Bays, Lighthouse Road and Foster Avenue, that, that curve there, that bend where it always really floods out terribly, so we're working on that, and there again, too, that's over three hundred thousand dollars, two projects.
When you said, Mark, when you say clean water projects, so they're really designed to improve the bay?
It's the runoff from the road, goes through our system into the bay. Right now, we're not allowed to divert any water from the road into the bay, so this system will allow us to actually be able to.
So why couldn't the CPF water quality money be used?
We're trying to work with CPF, we are, but, you know, she hasn't guaranteed us anything yet, but she is also trying to do that. We have so many other drainage projects, we have so many coverts that need to be fixed, they're all hundred-plus-thousand-dollar projects here, it's just one project.
But we do that with CPF. Have you guys applied with, with the CPF board?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so it goes in cycles, so are you waiting for, you're waiting for the results of?
We haven't, right now, Alwaye Creek was the biggest, you know, where they matched and did all that, so we're still waiting to hear from, about Lighthouse Road right now. You know, it's only about, it's a half, so if they give us one fifty, there's one fifty that we'd have to come up with, obviously, you know that. But in the future.
Well, no, not necessarily. It, it depends on the application and what's stated in the application on the Water Quality Board. You know, they only review them two or three times a year as they, you know, if it, if this is an urgency of, of some kind, then, you know, we need to get that to the CPF office to talk about.
Jackie, I gave her all the information about Lighthouse last Thursday, she had a meeting with the board.
Last Thursday, so, okay.
Yeah, so we're waiting to hear from that.
And now, Mark, these aren't the only two drainage issues in the town.
No, we have a few in, in Remsenburg, I mean, at the Bridgehampton, all, a lot of coverts, a lot, there's so many areas that are just antiquated.
Has the CPF committee or the town board denied any of those CPF funding requests?
Nothing was denied yet, no.
Nothing, right, so, I mean, it just makes sense if it can be paid for with CPF, if it qualifies, rather than having increased taxes to pay for it, that seems, you know, seems appropriate, if it qualifies for that, and you don't have to have a fifty percent match, I don't know why you came up with that.
So, I don't know, that's, you know, working, I don't know.
Not for, not for the CPF grants, but Dorothy, did you have the number that we were looking for?
But, but one other, sorry, one other point, is that with CPF, you also, by doing that, you qualify for, for grants that you might not normally be able to qualify as well, because then it's a sanctioned project, and that's important to understand. I mean, that, that's, you know, we do, with the trustees, it's been millions of dollars that we've given them for water quality projects over the years. So it's supposed to be designed for departments to be able to take advantage of, and it actually puts you in a better position, because then you can get grants from other sources that you might not normally have gotten to be able to get.
And in the areas of, in the areas of Royal and Long Neck, you know, they're very low to water, I mean, you know, I don't know where the water would go, but I'm sure you have it figured out, or, you know, there's probably rain gardens involved and other things that mitigate stormwater runoff into Reeves Bay, which is a.
The Fender streamer, yeah.
Right, and that's a compromised bay, we're trying to do some work over there, so, you know, we definitely support those projects, but I, I think it would be better served for CPF water quality monies to have that, get that done, in a way.
But it's, all our drainage products aren't just about the water quality, it's not just the water that's going directly into the bays. It's also about the roadway systems, that the, the pipes going into the sumps. There's so many areas where it's just.
Yeah, so that, we can't use CPF for.
No, that's my point.
We did at Mill Park, you know, where we had a drainage issue, and for the exact, for that exact same reason. So it can be qualified under certain circumstances for that. I don't see where this would not qualify, but, you know, you may be suffering from the fact that the way, they get a lot of applications, so it takes them a long time to get through, because they do a real rigorous job.
Right.
Then it comes in front of us, and, and we make that decision. In the long run, it's better for you, I think, because you'll be subject to CPF funding over a long term as a, as a matter of course.
Yeah, I don't think we're saying we shouldn't do these projects, I just think the funding source ought to come in a different place than you're trying to get.
If we can get it from CPF, of course, that's a hundred percent. But even like the precast, everything is so expensive, in order to, to do one job, it's just, you know, it could be sixty thousand dollars in precast rings and, and all that, so it's more than just, you know, the product's dealing with.
Some of the stuff was neglected, so, for years, so.
What's that?
And some of the stuff has, has been neglected, infrastructure that's been neglected.
And that's where.
You know, and I know you're trying to fix it all, but, you know, sometimes you've got to stretch it out over time, too.
Right.
But Dorothy, do you have the numbers?
Wait, Dorothy, if, again, Mark, while you're still on there, Charlie called me yesterday, Charlie McCardle, Highway Superintendent, and he asked me to walk on a project for Neuyak Road. You know, I, I think it's five-plus-million dollars as a capital project walk-on, and I just thought, you know, at this particular time in our budget process, it was, it was late for that, and it would throw our capital budgeting off considerably. So, you know, I, I didn't walk that on, and with this one, had I, you know, we would be asking for an additional, I think, six-plus-million dollars in our capital budget.
And that's to, you know, to repair.
You know, and so we're trying to, you know, we have to sharpen the pencil on the budget, and, yeah.
So, Mark, when did you start your conversations with CPF on this?
Uh.
It was, it wasn't Thursday.
No, no, this is probably close, almost a year now, you know, we've been going back and forth, trying to figure stuff out, maybe a little less, but we've been talking with, with Jackie a lot, and, and she's been helpful, you know, giving us to the right people, and even trying to go for the county money, but it just, it takes so long, and, and, you know, we want to take care of things now.
Do you, do you have a, a, a plan on what's the priority and which projects you want to go for and sort of?
Lighthouse right now would, would be the priority right now, and then we'd go to Royal.
So that, that's part of the, the working things out with CPF.
Yeah, and she's aware of that.
By liaising to CPF, I'm certainly happy to talk to you, we'll see her this afternoon, as a matter of fact.
Okay, she has both projects, she has all the information, you know?
Because once you get in that queue and you start, then you've got, you know, you can plan for the future, because you know you're going to have different funding sources, some from the town. I, I personally think for these kinds of projects, more from CPF, because that's really why the CPF Water Quality Board was, was, was put in place, is to serve our, our community by trying to protect our waters. And as you said, it is a, a project of clean water, project. So, it should be subject to, and you applied for the grant with, with the county, and they said no. If you re-imply with CPF grant, you may, they may say yes. You know, it's that kind of finesse that needs to happen, but I'm certainly happy to talk to Jackie and, and get that straightened out, because I, I think in the long run, in the long term, it's going to serve your department better.
But in the long term then, too, what's going to suffer is the roadway system. That's not around the waters, and that's my, that's really urgent to us.
I, I get that.
And that's where we need some more help and more funding. That's the bottom line.
All right, Mark, just take us here for a second. Let's hear from Dorothy. So, Dorothy, we're going to look at what we had budgeted in the past for drainage, and how much is available and reserved.
For twenty twenty-three, we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Three fifty?
Correct. Now, remember, like I said, capital spending happens throughout the year, and it doesn't close us at the end of the year. It's not, it's a multi-year project, so we won't know what's the available balance to roll, you know, for twenty twenty-four, until the end of the year, when they pay all, you know, all the bills, when the highway department.
What do we have in that account right now?
I don't know what the, I mean, we budgeted three fifty, three hundred and fifty. I'm not sure right now. We, exactly, okay, so I'm not sure it's.
So, and, so we had, in twenty twenty-three, this year, we had budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand for drainage. And then in twenty-four, in the proposed budget, there's four hundred thousand.
Correct, we put four hundred thousand, correct.
And I think there, you know, the reason why I didn't go up that much is because I knew that the available is CPF funds, and if we can get them from that source, it almost, you know, you have the, the non-CPF money plus, it could be much greater amount of CPF money.
Well, we also take, remember, we also take into consideration all the other departments and borrowing and, you know, the projects for everybody else, not just the highway department.
And also on that, so, I mean, typically, in a typical year, we're retiring debt, but we're also adding new debt. And so, the typical borrowing usually is around thirteen million to fifteen million.
Correct, this year.
Fifteen, but we had the debt reduction policy.
We were going to do fifteen million. It was thirteen million, fifty thousand because of the debt reduction, correct.
Right, and so then, in the following year, basically, the principal and interest kick in, and that's going to have to be collected in taxes to pay that principal and interest.
Correct, yes.
So, the current capital budget, assume, you know, without any of these additions to it, I think it was like eighteen million.
It's almost nineteen million dollars.
I had, I think, fifty million in requests, and that does not include the Sagaponik ECD, did it?
Correct, the, the borrowing that we have right now in the preliminary, preliminary budget is for eighteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Almost nineteen million.
And it does not include the borrowing that we're going to be doing for the, it's twenty-one million for Bridgehampton and Sagaponik.
So, it's already three to four million more than we typically borrow.
Right, I mean, it may be less if we, remember, depending on we, how we finish out the year, we always use a debt reduction policy to lower.
Well, we don't know yet.
Correct, we don't know how that's going to happen.
Until April, next year, if we're going to have anything to apply in that debt reduction. Hopefully, we do.
Well, we usually do. I don't know how much, but.
We usually do, but, you know.
Correct, but I don't know at this moment.
It depends on mortgage tax revenues.
Correct.
It depends on interest we've received, what expenses we didn't project, predict.
Absolutely.
So, I'm not going to assume that there's going to be this, you know, unanticipated surplus that's going to greatly reduce this number. But what I was going to say is, so you're going from thirteen million dollars in borrowing this year to.
Almost nineteen.
Already nineteen million dollars, at likely going to be higher interest rates, because that's the, you know, what's happened, what's happening in the world.
Correct.
And that is going to impact the following budget. The twenty twenty-five budget is going to have to collect the money, and you're putting pressure on the next board to stay within the cap. So, I, I'm just saying that we had, I think, fifty million dollars in requests. I knocked it down to about nineteen million, which is more than I wanted. They were great projects, but.
I mean, we have more in capital project. Nineteen million is just what we bonding. Remember, some of it is, we did little fund balance appropriations, yes.
Yeah, and Highway has money in pay-as-you-go, too. We put money in.
We do, but we usually give them, yes, we gave them five hundred thousand dollars of borrowing for the road improvements, yes. We started that doing last year.
But is it fair to say that if a pro, a multi-year project that CPF funded really offsets the total, the bottom-line cost of that project? Because there's no borrowing, there's no debt service, or there's less borrowing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, I, I mean, I have to look, but I think there's still money this year in twenty twenty-three from water quality. But I'm, I'm not sure, you know, what else was presented to the board and what's going to be awarded.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, so I'll talk to Jackie, but it seems to me that that would be, that it would create overall savings that we're trying to realize.
Absolutely, absolutely. But like, and I, I, Mark did say that they, they did apply. I'm not sure where we are in the process, so.
Did we increase, or what did we do with Highway Pay As You Go? Was it about to level?
Oh, I have it again in my, in my folder. I believe we gave them for, the pay-as-you-go for the roads was five hundred thousand. We started that last year. And then we put, I think, in vehicles, but I'm not sure. I mean, I would have to really look. But we do, we do put in pay-as-you-go, absolutely.
I remember making increases to the highway department.
Correct, we do go, and, you know, we gave pay, pay-as-you-go in everybody, in general fund for purchase of equipment and vehicles, in highway, in, in I-1-1, you know, water district, we did that. I don't have the numbers for me, because I didn't bring it, but I can look it up, and I can let you know.
Right, and it's not impossible next year to change the capital program and do a second bond offer.
Correct, we typically would do bond resolutions if, when the budget is adopted, probably in January, when we write all the bond resolutions. Now, we don't go into, for borrowing until, you know, until we know how much we can apply for the debt, from the debt reduction policy. So, I would say June, May, June, we can absolutely amend the budget at any time and request another bond resolution.
Because this money that's being requested here, an additional nine hundred thousand dollars or so, I'm pretty confident they're going to get that from CPF, personally.
What happens if we can't get that money from CPF? Then we're.
Then, then you have to amend the.
Then we would have to, in twenty twenty-four, present it to the board again to amend the capital budget. And, I mean, you can always amend the capital budget as long as the board votes in favor.
There's no halt, there's no halt.
And there's costs associated with doing the bond.
But I think, John, one of the, one of the reasons I even brought this up, and, and the CPF is great and everything, but when one of our department heads goes to them and has a project they like to be taken care of, they should take that under their arm and say, come on, let's get this done. Rather than giving up all these, for these other projects, you know, something like this should have been taken care of for this round. And I hope that the next board can get that done.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Excuse me, one second. You know, we fell way behind with the last administration. These guys are doing a great job to catch up, no question about it. And now we're going to start to stall, because we're not going to give them the funds that they need. Everything's getting so expensive. You can't do three projects a year. They're doing one, and that's it, and then they're sitting on their hands, waiting for money for the next year. So, at some point, we're going to have to jump the hurdle here and get them caught up on the projects that they've been looking to do for a couple of years.
No disagreement with that at all. I, I, I think, you know, I need to know more about, about this.
But you also have to remember.
I think that can be peeled out early in, by the committee in the board.
We, we can take things out of order, so we have to see what that is.
There's no requirement to wait till June for CPF funding. The board can authorize an allocation in January, February for this, for this project.
Water quality can be, right, at any point.
It may be partial, and it may be, you know, a combination.
You know, there is some, you know, this year's water quality funds were largely used, you know, there, there may be some money left over.
I, I believe there, there are.
There, I believe there is, that's why I need to talk to Jackie.
There are still money left over, but I don't know what has been already, you know, awarded.
So, it's possible things can even be done this year, or some of it can be put into that project.
Well, it's, it's the multi-year projects, so that, that's the difficult part, because you have to basically encumber those funds, because you know what it's going to spend, but quite often, the, the application comes back with an increase to the original application, and that's a little hard to manage that way, so, you know, but costs increase over time. It's hard to anticipate that in, in a one-year, you know, first-year application for a five-year project, you know.
But they do, but they do.
Just one second, Dorothy.
They do, I mean, to a point.
And these are worthy projects, and I think they should get done. And so, there's two pots of money, one that will lead to higher property taxes, and one that won't. And if, and if it qualifies, the one that won't lead to higher property, and even your boss said, I do a good job in managing the money, right? So, I want to, if that's the possib, if that is a probability, that's the direction we should go, and as a taxpayer, I'm sure you can appreciate that. So, that's, that's all, and, you know, if, if you don't succeed in getting CPF money, then we can borrow the money.
And ultimately, I think it'll be a combination of both, but let's see what the balance can end up being.
So, could we, instead of the nine hundred, can you give us a little bit more, just to do a little, you know, road progress?
So, we, we budgeted four.
We budgeted four hundred thousand.
Fifty thousand more. I'll do, I'll go up another hundred above that. Ricky, you okay with that?
So, you're going to amend the resolution?
We'd have to amend the resolution to five hundred thousand.
I mean, to increase by a hundred.
Yeah, I get concerned about these baselines, because you're saying these projects haven't been done for years. You're trying to catch up, and then you end up with a budget, and then they go, oh, well, we got a million dollars last year. We want a million dollars next year. If you push that base up, it can be confusing to future boards, so if you want to push it up to five hundred thousand, from the three fifty it was this year, I'll, I'll support that. Well, we did four hundred.
I think the supervisor is trying to increase the budget by another hundred.
Another hundred thousand.
Can we do one fifty? I think that might cover the two projects.
Well, there may be some money left in the budget, but so you want to go from four hundred to five fifty? Well, the CPF money's going to come in, that's.
Well, we're going to make that decision, but there's still other projects that need to get done.
Work with what you know.
Come on, I got twenty-nine days left. Give me fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm afraid it's going to repeat itself over and over and over again, and it probably should for a couple of years, because it's, there's money to do. Nice round number, five hundred thousand.
All right, do five hundred.
All right, so Ricky's. All right.
At least you're ahead.
So, Sunday, Rick is making a motion to amend thirteen seventy-seven to add an additional hundred thousand dollars rather than.
A hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty.
No, he's.
Hundred, hundred, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll get you for fifty on the next one.
So, cross off the nine hundred and fifty and make it one fifty?
One hundred.
One hundred even?
An additional one hundred thousand.
It's a half a grand.
I saw this one for a budget of five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, yes. I'll second the, the motion to amend. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and a motion to approve as amended. I'll second that as well. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, Ricky, you have the next one, too?
Town Board Resolution thirteen seventy-eight of twenty twenty-three, amend the twenty twenty-four preliminary capital budget for townwide sidewalks. So, this is an additional request for two hundred thousand dollars per sidewalk.
Who is seconding?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McNamara, where Dorothy. So, I know that I have been increasing the amount of money for sidewalks, because I believe in general in sidewalks, maybe not everywhere. But, so, what are we up to? What do we do in twenty-three? Do you have that?
Jacqueline's getting that, because I know, I knew that was going to be the question. She just left, but the original request was for five hundred thousand dollars.
Because it used to be like in the budget field, it was fifty thousand dollars.
I think we did two fifty, but I don't want to, you know, not a hundred percent.
I feel like we did, and we used some ARPA money, too, for sidewalks.
Not for sidewalks, we did.
We were matching, well, in, in Neuyak.
That wasn't the highway sidewalks project.
Oh, wasn't it?
But in the first resolve, it, it's asking to increase by two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, so I'm assuming there's three hundred thousand.
Correct, three hundred thousand is what's right now in the budget.
Yeah, which I believe is a lot more. I like, I think the old budgets had like fifty thousand a year in sidewalks, and I used to say that's not enough.
When you look at it, this is H-128 project, which is, has been, you know, for like eight years. We kind of put additional money in that project for additional work.
Increasing costs.
And increases every year.
I think if you go back historically, that line for sidewalks was fifty thousand.
Absolutely, but then the cost goes up as well, so.
So, what I'm saying is, I've greatly increased the amount of money for sidewalks, so we're going to go back into this negotiation, because three hundred thousand is a pretty good allocation for sidewalks. I know things have gotten more expensive. And, you know, I know East Hampton, they have their own, they have a sidewalk crew. They do it in-house, which is, you know, something we might want to think about. It might keep the cost down, but, you know, let's, let's get the numbers, but I might be.
She's going to tell me. I, I think we did two fifty or three hundred, but I can't right now without looking at this.
Yeah, let's see what twenty-three had for sidewalks.
And you might as well look at the next resolution.
Now, this one, there's no CPF money for sidewalks, so this is one of those places, though there may be.
Unless there's filtration involved.
There have been county grant monies used for sidewalks, particularly those safe routes to school sidewalks, which is probably passing the money from the state.
Which we did in Eastport. We used that money exactly for them.
And those are nice to have, matching local grants.
So, John, you know, we're getting a big request from your area, you know, for sidewalks.
Where in particular?
The Remsenburg area.
Wait, hang on, Mark, Dorothy, you have the numbers?
We did Eastport, all the way down to Park.
So, in twenty twenty-three, we did a hundred fifty thousand.
A hundred fifty thousand, so I doubled it in twenty-four. That's a pretty big jump.
And there's three thousand dollars left in that.
That's correct. There's three thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars left.
So, you used a hundred fifty?
I could have used another hundred fifty. Yeah, we just stopped when we had to stop.
So, I, I understand that. That would have been three hundred thousand.
So, just to give you an idea, we're.
Much to the mic.
In Hampton Bay, it has no sidewalk there right now. Just a few months ago, somebody died on that corner crossing from the movie theater over Springville Road. So, there is a sidewalk along where the old bank, the restaurant is there. From the, from the tracks south, we want to make a sidewalk all the way down to at least Bay Avenue, so people can walk. I'm in the, in the process of getting more lighting, uh, street lighting done there. That just needs it. People, there's so many people at night that it's, it's horrific, and that's going to be a hundred fifty, the two hundred thousand dollar job itself, just to run that all the way down.
Bet more than that, but.
Yeah, I'm meeting next week to get the numbers.
We went on Schittcock Road.
That's the next one, I was just going to bring that up.
Foster, maybe Lighthouse. I think we disagree as to where that sidewalk should go, but heading to the Ponkock Bridge.
Yep.
So, I budgeted three hundred thousand. Ricky, you want to get that other fifty thousand here? Did he say two hundred fifty? I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, I don't know what the rest of the board, I'll do, and I'll go from three hundred to four hundred thousand, another hundred grand.
Thank you.
Ricky, you okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
I support it.
But also, I, I would explore with CPF, particularly on sidewalks that are over drainage systems, in particular, if you're putting in filtration for that, those kinds of things, anything to do with water going back into the aquifer in some form or another through runoff, waste management, in a sense, runoff management, that could qualify. So, just keep that in mind.
To, you know, county's got that Jump Smart, like downtown revitalization monies. They, suddenly, the county's got money. They got ARPA money. They've got, seem, they seem to be flush at the moment. So, you know, actually, I think, maybe Susan Von Freddy is still on the Downtown Committee, but Downtown projects, you can make requests. And, you know, you got, we got a pretty good advocate over there. I think it's worth trying.
Okay. So, Mark, if you could, too, you know, for the future board, make that list of what you have done over the last couple of years, what your plans are, what the costs are. Let them, explain to them how much it does cost to get these things done.
Definitely. All right, so Ricky.
And over time, because there's an increase slide.
So, so we're going to split the two hundred thousand dollar increase and make it a one hundred thousand dollar increase. So, Rick's making a motion to amend from two hundred thousand to one hundred thousand. So, the capital, we can become four hundred thousand would be total. Sunday, you got that?
I need a vote, too.
Okay, so there's a motion. I'll second it to amend. All in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to approve as amended, which I'll also second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Town Board Resolution thirteen seventy-nine of twenty twenty-three, amend the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for salary and related benefits for the Deputy Superintendent of Highways.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McNamara.
So, on that, I know you're going to love this one, but I think you've seen Mark in action. I, you know, Dorothy and I sat down, we combined the salaries of appointed, and took away all the assistant town attorneys and all the other positions, and Mark fell well below. Everybody classified in the same section as him. With all the work he does, the fact that he's always on site, that I've never, I didn't even know who the last assistant was for two years. I mean, he's done a terrific job, and this just gets him up to pretty much the. much the lowest end of the scale. And I think, uh, he's well worth the investment.
So the, it'll go to a 92,000 dollar salary. What benefit?
For, okay.
You know, Mark does a good job. And is Jan in this one, too?
No.
Just the one?
Yep.
What, what are you, moral support? Yeah? Okay.
You know, again, uh, Mark, it's not personal. I, I turn down everybody. It's really, if the board wants to do it, the board can do it. But, um, you know, the new board can do it as well. It can be done anytime. But when you're faced with so many requests, it's, I, a lot of departments came to me asking for raises of individuals, and some in the same capacity. Uh, I get it.
And we've seen, and we've seen a lot of those requests. And, you know, those are higher end. I, I think, you know, the couple you have sitting right there qualified for our housing lottery, just so you guys know. And if we can't pay two people that work very hard in our highway department, and they can't make the AMI, and they have to go for affordable housing, there's something wrong. So, you know, this, this small increase, and it's less than half of what I originally thought after talking to Dorothy, I just brought it up to this level. Um, I think it's a place that he can move forward from here on.
Anyone else on the motion?
Well, again, it's, it's tough, you know. I feel uncomfortable sometimes because I'm even fighting for that, because I'm on my way out. And I'm gonna leave the next board with what they saw. Uh, you know, even though I just fought for somebody I knew personally, I, I don't know you personally, but I understand the reasoning. Um, it, this is difficult. Uh, this, this budget is right at the top. It's right, it's close, and it's difficult. And no one wants to pierce the caps. No one wants to do any of that. Um, you know, I don't see this as a big increase, but, um, I'm gonna have to go with the supervisor and what he's suggesting to us. Um, and I don't know what that is yet, but, uh, this is very hard to do.
I.
It's hard to be put in this position.
There is a 2.5% increase that they've got, and an increase in longevity. I don't think you get longevity, though.
I would just, I will just say that, you know, to leave this to the next board when everybody on this board pretty much knows this person's work, the new board has no working history with this individual. So he now has to have a working relationship with the new board in order to ask for that money. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna give increases to people that we know and that work hard, but we're gonna take care of term limits before the next board, board takes it. So I just, I find it odd.
Jay, you know me. I'm not, I don't ask for everybody, and I don't, you know, ask for a lot. But this is just one that I've seen him in action. I've talked to him almost every day, and, you know.
Priority.
This is someone who really deserves it.
Well, for me, and for the reasons that I stated earlier, for the number of people who have asked us for raises, I'm gonna stick with my position. I didn't support one from my own legislative aide.
I didn't either. I had three.
Well, I, I'm gonna react to that, because I don't think you should be burying apples and oranges. We have somebody in a position who needs another person that's been working over a year without that person to help her. So she's been doing two jobs for a year. Your aides haven't. So I, I just wanna. I, I just, you know.
That's kinda bringing up a different conversation.
You know?
And like I said earlier, I did bring names up, and we didn't wanna go that route, so.
My aides have assisted your offices, let's say.
No, I'm saying everyone works together. That's the, that's my whole point.
We know there's a shortfall there. And you only have one person, so we tried to help, what we could.
Yeah. And I, and that's, that's the reason I, my conscience is, tells me that that's the vote I have to take.
Do we know, what did, um, the prior deputy make? Did he, I don't, I, I know Deputy Bob was here for a long time. Was it substantially more than Mark was making?
Um, I don't believe so. No, I think Mark was making more than the prior deputy. But I would have to look. Do you want me to look at how much he was making?
And he was an engineer.
There were media raises.
Deputy Bob?
I mean.
Yeah.
I would have to look in.
He was an engineer.
Prior budgets, just to see how much he was making. Actually, we can look into the 2022 budget, because of Mark was.
If you still have the paperwork that we redlined.
Right. It would be on the, in the sound chart.
Why don't we hold off then and take a look at?
Yeah, I will, we'll let you know. Just give me a second.
I mean, Mark's proven himself, but.
Yeah, that's the, it's, this is what makes these things very difficult to do or not do.
All right. While they get, get that information, um, why don't we put that one on hold? And, uh. You said I can't move on to the next one? I don't see why not.
What do you know, Travis? You've only been here for how many administrations? That's a crossover.
Yeah.
All time.
Can we move on to the next resolution?
Yeah.
Then come back if that hurts?
So, no problem. Let's go, let's, let's, we're putting, we're putting a pause on 1379 for a minute. And we'll move to 1380. Proceed. What's the question?
Yep. We have 2:00 planning board. They need to move.
Oh, all right. So we gotta hurry along. All right. So, um, 2023, uh, 1380 adopts the 2024 to 28 capital program and the 2024, um, capital budget.
Do we have to do that as amended with the changes that we had today? I mean, it, they're.
I think you do.
No, you've already amended. You can adopt that one.
Okay. Okay.
The op, yeah, the final, yeah.
I'll second it?
Yeah, we understand that, yeah. Any amendments, yeah, this is, yeah, would be included in this. So here's Dorothy.
Okay, so in 2022, uh, the deputy superintendent of highway was making 76,095.
That was 2022?
Correct. And then Mark came along in 2023.
What did Mark comment on?
He came at 84,856.
And that was an increase that we had made at the time?
Correct. I mean, when he was appointed, I guess there were changes in salaries and.
Which is 12 grand, roughly.
Well, I'll say that Mark, Mark manages 60 people.
Yeah, 76, 84.
And the deputy receiver taxes.
What? Eight, I'm sorry. Bad math.
That's okay. Um, in 2024, so he would be getting a 2.5% increase anyway.
So he's gonna be making 86,977 before.
Wait.
You know what I mean?
So it's roughly nine. Okay. You want, I don't know, you might wanna table this?
I was gonna say that right now.
I mean, we really can, we really can table. It has to be there. Cause with the budget, once the budget is adopted, you can't.
If I can pull this off going to 90, rather than 92? Well, what do you guys think? You wanna do a little something?
Sure. I, Mark's proven himself. I just, you know, I'm trying to go along with you on.
I didn't wanna get into this, because so many people wanted to.
So many people have asked us.
Well, you know, there are.
Then we would get department chairs coming to these meetings, and we should schedule three hours to have these discussions in public.
But these are resolutions in front of us.
To budget.
Maybe a problem, too, because then it becomes.
This is, yes.
You pay with the fine.
I am.
Yeah, can I see that?
So for next year, so he would be 84,8?
No, he was gonna be making 86,977 dollars.
86,9 as of January 1?
First.
86,9.
977.
So. Yeah, so if we brought him to 90, it's pretty close. All right?
As opposed to, no, I'll take that.
It's like 3,000 more. All right. Not what you want, but I'll, I'll support a setting the salary January 1 at 90,000. All right?
Yes.
All right. So Rick is making the motion to amend. I'll second. Um, you guys okay with it?
Aye.
Give a little time, John, if you can.
Uh, no, I think it's gonna cause problems. But because we've, we've talked to so many other people and said, you know, we love you, you do a great job. We're not doing it this year. And, uh, so I am okay with it. And the work that you do, you're here in the room right now. However, because of the myriad of other people who have asked us.
Well, unfortunately, you know, we, we did another, we did, Paula got a.
That's true.
So now we're.
I don't think it's unfortunate. I think that's the resolution that was in front of us.
You know.
And those are the resolutions that got brought forward. And we, we're required to deal with those.
All right. I don't wanna put you in a bad.
No, I, I support it.
All right, all right. So are we, all right. So we had a motion and a second to amend. All in favor of amending?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Sunday, you understand the amendment, or, uh, Kim?
Yep.
Sorry. Um, all right. Uh, a motion to approve as amended. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mark. So you'll go up about 3,000 dollars, on top of the 2.5.
So you got a little bit of everything you asked for.
No, you didn't. We, we're splitting the baby today.
Everybody's got a little bit. It's all compromised.
Okay.
Oh, no, I think we just started.
This is the opportunity.
We have just started.
So we need to move on then? So 1380?
So we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, it was all, yeah. I know, did I call them all in favor of the amended resolution? Aye, aye.
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 Okay. So that was unanimous. And then we're moving on to 1340 of 2023, adopting the 2024 to 28 capital program and 2024 capital budget. This would include, Dorothy,